Good evening, everyone. I'll go ahead and call the June 21st, 2021 meeting of the Paducah Independent School Board of Education to Order. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Coogee?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Ms. Howard?
Here.
Dr. Hudson?
Here.
Dr. Laban?
Here. Have we established a quorum?
Yes, we have.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
There's a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. If everyone would please stand. Dr. Shively, would you lead us in the pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The first item on tonight's agenda is special recognition. And if I could ask Troy Brock to come forward, please, and introduce the special recognition.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to recognize a special person, a special accomplishment. And to help me do that, I'm going to have Mayor Brady actually come up and present that recognition. Yeah, come on up.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Glad to be here. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm really, really proud to be able to be a part of this recognition because, you know, coming out of pandemic, it's been very challenging for all of us, and I know it's been really challenging for the independent school system here. I want to honor and pay compliments, really, to someone who coordinated all of the distribution of the food that you did to all the students. And it was a massive undertaking, I know. Over 600 meals a day, and I think I've heard that maybe you've distributed almost 700,000 at this point. So I want to recognize Lindsey Barnhill. And the only way that I can do that is by offering you this Duchess of Paducah Award, which is Paducah's, the Duke and Duchess of Paducah Award are the very highest awards that the city of Paducah can offer. And so I offer you my congratulations as our newest Duchess. Mayor, would you mind coming around just a little bit over this way? We'll get your away from your screen over there so they won't be shining on your face.
Right in center, straight.
Keep going, you're good. All right, here we go. Yeah, there we go. Good, thank you. Yeah. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Lindsey. I remember way back early in the pandemic when we first quit going to school, Dr. Shively texting us all about the number of meals that were delivered the first day that we didn't have kids at school. And I just felt at that time that was so reassuring. It had to be for them to know that they were still getting meals delivered. And I think it was very important that that happened immediately as we quit going to school. And then just as the program continued to grow and expand and continued to do service throughout the remainder of the year, it was incredible. I know there's a lot of people with the stay program and everything else that support Lindsey and the schools and what they're doing, and we're just so grateful for all of that effort. Congratulations. The next item on our agenda is student achievement. Mr. Will Black, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, it is my honor to introduce to you guys, actually, you've met one of them before, I believe, Dr. Vincent, but I'm here to introduce our University of Kentucky professors who have been conducting our racial equity audit that we have begun in the past, over the past month or so. We've actually been working on this process with a committee of local community members, parents, and even students over the past five or six months. And so we're now in the middle of the auditing process, and this has been a, you know, we're really excited about this process. It's important for our district in terms of being able to fulfill its vision of knowing each and every student by name and need. We know we have persistent achievement gaps along racial lines, and we know that we have work to do as a district to ensure equity for each child. And this audit is going to help us identify how to better serve each child, really to understand the needs of each child on a higher level. So we're really excited about it. I want to turn it over to Dr. Greg Vincent and then Dr. Sarah LeCore, starting with Dr. Vincent. Thanks for being with us. And I think you're muted there, Dr. Vincent. Hold on one second.
Well, coming up to you now.
There we go.
It is a joy to join the Paducah community, even if it's in virtual form. I want to do a couple of things, and then turn it over to Dr. LeCore. First, I want to go out to the Paducah community, in particular, the Action Committee that worked with us. And it has been a joy, and I want to give special recognition to Will Black and your fellow school board members, Janice and Dr. Felix, the community members, and especially the students who, as mentioned, did such an outstanding job throughout the process. What I can tell you, what I can assure you, is that your committee members who represent you, all of you, did a phenomenal, done a phenomenal job in representing the best of you. No matter what the differences are, there was a consensus, a unanimous sense of commitment to make Paducah and Paducah schools the best that they can be, and that has lived out throughout this process. As you all know, Greg Vincent, I served as the Executive Director of the Education and Civil Rights Initiative and a professor at the University of Kentucky. And I want to speak for my wonderful partner, Dr. LeCore, that we see this as part of our mission. This is what we do. This is what we're supposed to do at the university. We're not supposed to stay in our ivory tower, but to work hand in hand with communities across Kentucky, the region, the nation, and the world to solve problems, to use the best research and practice to help community. And that's what we feel we're doing today. The other thing we want to mention is that we want every community to live up to the promise of Brown. We need more of education to ensure that every child has access to an excellent, equitable education. That's what we're here to do. And so we have been working hand in hand, the committee working. And let me just also say that the administrators, the principals, the folks in the central office have been absolutely fantastic. Anything we needed, they have worked with us, and it's been fantastic. I am so honored to introduce my colleague, my fellow professor faculty, the Assistant Director of the Education and Civil Rights Initiative, Dr. Sarah LeCore. Let me just share a little bit about her. I could go on and on, but I'm going to give you a digist version of this. You know, Dr. LeCore, and her, she had two roles, both as an educator, she was a classroom teacher, so she understands what it means to be in the classroom, and of course now is a social scientist and a researcher. She also had a career as a litigator, as an attorney, working on these civil rights issues, these educational equity issues. So she comes so well versed in the work that we're doing. And so these equity audits, with my experience, both as also being an attorney and also being a professor and a researcher and social scientist, we came together to do this work. And I think you'll be pleased to hear the progress we've made so far. And again, it's a large part due to the leadership and the Action Committee. And again, another shout out to the students. Dr. LeCore.
Thank you so much, Dr. Vincent, and thank you to the school board for this opportunity to engage with your community in this work and to provide you with this update. And as just a step back, our equity audit process is conceived in three phases. And without really delving into the specifics of those, I'll say that we're in the first phase solidly, and that is our data collection phase. And that is composed primarily of three components: surveys, a series of focus groups, and a policy review. So to date, we have sent out survey links to students, to personnel, and to parents from the school district. We have 961 student respondents who have taken the student survey. We have 313 district personnel, and by personnel here, we mean faculty, staff, administrators, generally employees of the district who were invited to take this survey. And we have 313 of those so far, so we are hoping to increase that participation rate by sending out some reminders. And we only recently sent the link out to parents, so we're still waiting to gather some responses there. We've also conducted the first in a series of focus groups with the students in Paducah. And in terms of students, the folks that we've been engaging with are your middle school and high school students. So those were the students that participated in the survey, and those were the students that were invited to the focus groups. By way of invitation, we sent out a set of demographics across which we wanted some diversity. So it wasn't just in issues of identity, but also the ways and the extent to which students participate in their school community across arts, athletics, academics, extracurriculars, and curricular activities, their experiences of school discipline, for example. And we got a really diverse set of students who were so helpful in responding to our questions. And we are working now, we have a process in place to invite personnel to sign up for their focus groups, and we are working with the community to identify locations where we can have some community focus groups so that we can hear from the larger Paducah community about their experiences with and concerns regarding the school district. In anticipation of this evening, I took a preliminary look at some of the data that we are seeing. And I can say that the students and personnel were split on their view of the school district and matters of equity. And in the case of students, it was a pretty even split. And in the case of personnel, it weighed pretty heavily towards identifying an equity in the district as an issue of concern. So we look forward to working with the district to dig in on the particular areas of concern as they arise from our survey data, from our focus groups, and from our reviews of the various school district policies. Our next steps, we are currently working again towards identifying those locations that are willing to host community members for those focus groups and to gathering more parent and community responses to surveys, and then to engaging with the personnel so that they can participate in our focus groups in an anonymous way with respect to the school district. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. LeCore. Again, we so appreciate your giving a deeper dive into where we are. So at this point, we're happy to answer any questions that you have, and again, we look forward to probably all of the first meetings starting off the new year to give you a more substantial update.
Are there any questions from the board? Did you say, cut out on there just briefly, when do you anticipate the surveys being completed? And when did you anticipate first kind of presenting us with data or presenting the committee with the full set of survey and focus group data? Were you, sorry, could you hear, Dr. Laban? Okay.
We are per, to receive additional responses to the personnel survey, and we will be sending out some reminders to the parent surveys. At this point, we are working with the belief that we'll be able to provide you an initial analysis, at least, based on the data that we've collected from the focus groups and the surveys, probably at your first fall school board meeting. So late August, early September.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Vincent and LeCore, for your time this evening. We really appreciate all the work you've done. I cannot thank the University of Kentucky enough for their professional efforts. It has been truly a process that has been transparent and also very thoughtful and inclusive, very welcoming of all members of the committee, and I really appreciate that. Thank you for your work so far. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Black, did you have anything else under the student achievement or superintendent's report?
No, not unless anyone has any questions for me, any more questions. I will mention this, we have been working with PEA on distributing the personnel survey, and that number is actually up a little bit from the last time I heard the report for the percentage of staff members responding. So we are going to continue to reach out. We can connect with pretty much every staff member through a messaging app that we have, and that allows us to send a link directly to them. They can take the survey on their phone. They can also take it on paper, and so Ms. Maddie Morris and I have been discussing how to distribute paper copies just in case in a way that, you know, people can access or can take the survey if they don't have access to the electronic version. So just wanted to let everybody know. That's also true for the community. So there will be paper copies if people are unable to use an electronic link.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
The next item on our agenda is 4.1. This is an opportunity for oral communications from the audience regarding items which are included on tonight's agenda. Good evening.
My name is Maddie Morris. I'm PEA president. And what I've come to ask for consideration from the board is, which is on here, about salary change. Yes, we are grateful for having the raise of the 2%, but I'm asking if you would reconsider 2% and look at 3% or 3.5% to have us comparable to the county, Cracker County, which Cracker County does, they received a 3.5%. If we want to keep the best in our district, then we have to compete to stay the best. And we don't, do not want our neighbors stealing the best teachers, and not just teachers, but all of our employees here in Paducah City. So I am asking for you to reconsider or think about making that change for us so we can stay looking the best here in Paducah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Maddie from the board? Are there any other comments from the audience regarding items which are included on tonight's Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to item 4.2. This is an opportunity for oral communications from the audience regarding items which are not included on tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, may I approach?
Sure.
Thank you all for allowing me an opportunity to speak. My father served on this board in 1968.
You're, I'd like to make sure everybody knows your name and who speaks.
Oh, sorry. My name is Bart Ryan. I'm a parent, a student in the school. My father served on this board in 1968, and he was firmly against segregation. He understood the value of equal opportunity for people. He understood that if you separate people by race, and especially by resources, that no good will come. And so it's in that spirit tonight that I'd like to address the board. My father passed away on June 15th, 2015. He would be furious with this board. He would be up here fighting you tooth and nail. I would be happy to debate what I'm about to speak on tonight with any of you board members, anywhere, I mean that in all due respect. I have a neighbor here, I have a gentleman, a physician that I've known for many, he doesn't have great respect for him. But I believe that this board is heading down a pretty obvious road of critical race theory. And I know that's a hot button issue. I didn't even really understand what it was until a few weeks ago, and then Mr. Black raised the issue that if you're not talking about race, you're not giving your child. I thought that was a little odd. I thought we were supposed to be educating children, but evidently we were supposed to be talking about race. And then I took the survey that went out. The survey that went out was nothing more than a push-pull. Now, that's dishonest. If you want to send out a survey, then send out an honest survey. Don't send out a survey that gets the answers that you want to generate. That's the thing on a survey, and I'm glad it was mentioned down there. But I want the parents, and I don't pretend that I'm going to convince this board of anything, but I want the parents of this town to understand what's coming. They have not hired a chief equity officer, which is in effect a chief political officer, for $101,000 to do nothing. They are going to institute programs that will separate your children according to oppressor and oppressed. That should never happen. Children should never be separated in such a way, especially according to racial lines. Now, if you tell me, like a lot of boards do, that this is not critical race theory, that's fine. I can deal with you on the basis of implicit bias or equity. First of all, it doesn't really even matter how wedded you are to the social justice program of equity and implicit bias. First of all, there's no, implicit bias, let me review what the co-inventor of the test that's supposed to test for implicit bias said. He said this, "Don't go for remedies that claim to be eliminating implicit bias or even eradicating automatic racial preferences in people's heads. There's no evidence that anything like that works. Those cures are of the snake oil variety." Now, I'd be happy to debate this with any of you people anytime. I'm very confident what I'm saying. But here's the thing about implicit bias. Even if it works, even if you can get into someone's subconscious mind, and even if you can get in their subconscious mind and figure out that their unconscious mind is making them do something consciously, that doesn't mean you can train them. And even if you can do that to our children, you're prohibited from doing it. So as you go down this road, as you're in phase one now, let me just point out what the Supreme Court said. And it had to do with high school students being forced to basically make statements and bend the knee to something they didn't believe. Here's what the Supreme Court said. "If there's any fixed star in our constitutional constellation, it is that no official, high or petty, can prescribe what shall be orthodox in politics, nationalism, religion, or other matters of opinion, or force citizens to confess by word or act, that are faith, therein." Now, maybe you're going to tell the people that you're not going down the critical race road. That's fine. I think I can easily show that that's where you're going with this. You're going to institute these programs on our children. But here's what's odd. You hired a chief equity officer for $101,000 a year, and then the head of a Paducah Educational Association comes in and says they need more money for teachers. Well, for equity, again, I started looking at the documents that are provided on your website. You graduate 80% white students, 77% black, and 94% Hispanic. You have $57 million budget with spending per student of over $19,000 a year, which is 26% higher than the state average. The racial makeup in this district is 40% white, 38% black, and the balance is non-white. So there's basically 60% non-white, 40% black. Where's the inequity? Where is the inequity? What programs have you not been doing that have held our children back? I went through this public school system. My father and mother went through this. My brother went through this public school system. I love Paducah, and I love this school system. I think in the past, it's done a great job, and I trust you people. I trusted you people, the people that we elected to make sure that we don't have things like snake oil imposed in this system. And I'm sorry, I do not mean anything personal about this. This is strictly an argument about the programs that you are trying to foist on this school system. It should stop. I don't know how it's going to stop. I don't know if it's going to stop by lawsuit. I know that there are 20 states that have banned it. I know that one attorney general is looking at a 1964 civil rights action to stop it. I know there have been various injunctions that have been placed on schools. I'm not here by a professional capacity. I'm just here as a parent. I don't know what's going on. I know other parents are upset, and I know you have educators upset. So I think our children deserve better. I think our children deserve better than just social justice warriorship brought into the classroom. There should be some evidentiary nature to it. This sort of reminds me, again, with all due respect, I probably get it wrong from the physicians here, but it's sort of like if you went in and you diagnosed a patient without looking at any of the data, and then you prescribe chemotherapy to them, that's not caused great harm. Please, I don't know where you are in the phases. I've tried to help. You've got to stop going down this road. It makes no sense. Implicit bias, you can't test for it, and not only can't you test for it, you shouldn't. And you shouldn't try to change a child's subconscious mind. That's not your role. Your role is not to be moralist for this city. Your role is not to be social justice warriors for this city. Your role is to educate our children, not indoctrinate them. Now, I would encourage all the parents to get a Now, I would encourage all the parents to get involved in this situation, to educate yourselves. Please, get on YouTube, look at Implicit Bias Devolved, look at the Implicit Bias People That Sell It. I was shocked, and I, and, let me back up a minute. I'm going to get an open records request out, and I'm going to find out what the curriculum is going to be, and I'm going to find out what's changing. And I'm really going to find out what you put Dr. Shively through. Now, I don't know Dr. Shively. I don't think I've ever talked to him. But when I read your press release, I was shocked that you didn't face a lawsuit. I was, I want to know how he was trained or retrained. I want to know what tests he took to show that there was something, quote, "wrong with him," and I want to see, and I want to see the test material. So you'll be getting open records requests, and we'll go down that road. But my purpose here tonight, really, is not to convince you people of anything. My purpose here tonight is to alert parents in this district. Wake up. It's coming. Don't let them fool you. It's, it's critical race theory, and it's on the way. And so with that, I'll close, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And I'll be sending open records requests in the next minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Brian.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Brian.
Thank you.
Are there any other oral communications from the audience regarding items which are not included on tonight's agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, board members, and Dr. Shively. Thank you for giving an opportunity to speak here tonight. I want to thank you all on behalf of PDEA. I'm the classified staff member president for KDEA. And we wanted to thank you for the raise and then for the pay that you guys did for summer classified staff members. Also, I wanted to recognize that we had several of our classified staff members that retired. We had Lloyd Pullin, Joy Ross, Marjuna Schrauber, Mercedes Powers, and Ellen Merritt. Secondly, I wanted to address an issue that I had here at summer school with one of our students. Our students are the most important in the community. They're the most important, that's why we're here. And the issue that we had was, we were getting kids on the bus, we noticed a student trying to cross Park Avenue in the middle of the street. And we tried, we got away from the middle and told them to go to the light to cross over. We were told that we couldn't help them, and that it's something with the police department not paying, or we don't have funding, or whatever the case may be. I'm not sure exactly what's going on, but we don't have crossing guards. And my concern is our students, especially our elementary students, are crossing streets by themselves. This child was, I know, at least nine or 10. He could have been hit by a car, I mean, anything, and it hurt my heart that I could not help him. And I could not sleep thinking about what if something happened to that child. And like I said, our students are the most important, and I just want to know, is there, I know it's supposed to be funded from the police department, but is there any way we can allocate some funds, some kind of way to pay crossing guards? I know we got the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. I don't know if you can use some of that, but I was just concerned about our students, and I really think that there should be some kind of funding for crossing guards. It's not just for elementary, only something, because those babies are crossing busy streets, and they can get ran over, and I'm very concerned. But that's what I'm concerned about.
Were these strictly at the schools, or were there other locations that you were...
The only thing that I saw since summer school was a student trying to cross in the middle of Park Avenue.
At, at...
All these cars are coming, and this baby didn't even know how to cross. And we put him, he went to the end to cross where you see the signs, and he stood there I know at least 10 minutes. He didn't know when to cross. And I know it's supposedly, the parents are supposed to figure out how to get them, but what if the parents didn't work? There's nobody out there with this child. So I'm just concerned. I don't know about the other schools, but I know when I saw personally, I saw online, this child could have been ran over. So I just feel we need crossing guard funding or something. I know you guys are going to be putting me in, I forgot the name of the one, but, no matter. But yeah. So that's, that's my concern.
All right, we will look into it.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Are there any other oral communications from the audience regarding items which are not included on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Moving on to item 6.1, Salary Schedules. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the supplemental classified and certified salary schedules for 2021-2022. There may be additional adjustments for transportation and substitute salaries in July. Management needs to review the salaries for these positions. Is there a motion to approve item 6.1 salary schedules?
I'll make a motion we approve item 6.1 salary schedules.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions or comments from the board, from the superintendent?
Thank you all.
There's some comments earlier asking us to revisit this portion. Is that something that can be done at some point in the future if we approve the salary today?
Without a doubt. Sorry, I was, I'll back up a little bit. In working with this, with Angela Tocque, our finance director, I've asked that question. Is this, can we go more than 2%? She's told me she hasn't felt comfortable with anything above that, but we'll close out the fiscal year sometime in the middle of next week, and so maybe that'll adjust at that point. So I'm going to do all the okaying, because there's money in and money out, so I'm going to look at it from that standpoint a little bit. I'll ask her hopefully tomorrow or Wednesday.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board? If not, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes.
It's Cassidah Dinn.
No, this is for salary schedules.
Yeah.
Approve those?
Yes.
Yes.
So we approve the salary schedules, and Dr. Shively is going to look at the request that was made earlier about examining the adjustment in those. Item 6.2, Makerspace Adult Programming Staff Position. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the new staff position for Makerspace Adult Programming. The Makerspace Adult Programming Staff Position will support program implementation at the Innovation Hub Makerspace. There is adult demand for night class programming, and Makerspace is in need of teachers to help design and facilitate sessions. Adults who participate will cover the cost of the class, including teacher hourly compensation. Hourly rate will be $50 per hour. Is there a motion to approve the adult programming staff position?
I'll make a motion to approve item 6.2.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. District Technology Plan Final Draft. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education accept the final draft of the 2021-2022 District Technology Plan for second reading and approve as presented by Dale Weaver, Director of Information Technologies. And that's been emailed to us under separate cover. Is there a motion to approve the District Technology Plan Final Draft?
I'll make a motion that we approve the District Technology Plan Final Draft.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions from the board or comments from Mr. Weaver?
Thank you for all your support, for all the projects that we've done this year. Most of this plan this year is continuation of the projects that were ongoing this year, and it went well, so we just thank you for your support.
There are no questions from the board. Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 6.4, District Funding Assurances. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the district assurances, authorizing that all the schools in our district, including private schools receiving funding from our district, will be in compliance with all the assurances listed in the assurances document provided by the Kentucky Department of Education for the 2021-2022 school year. Is there a motion to approve item 6.4?
I'll make a motion to approve item 6.4.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 6.5, Amendment of Board Policies. KSBA Policy Update Number 44, First Reading. Superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education receive the first reading of the KSBA Policy Service Update Number 44 as recommended. A copy of the recommended policy changes is included with the agenda under separate cover. Is there a motion to approve these amendments of board policies?
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment of board policies.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 6.6, Payments to Contractors. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the payment to contractors for the Innovation Hub BG 17-179 as outlined below. This is payment application number 31 to contractor Ray Blackensun for $194,686.15. Is there a motion to approve item 6.7?
I'll make a motion we approve items...
Excuse me, 6.6.
6.6, Payments to Contractors.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and two seconds. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 6.7, Change Order Number 7. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve Change Order Number 7 for the art building renovation project slash multipurpose athletic facility. This change order will decrease the project by $2,792.57. Is there a motion to approve Change Order Number 7?
Hey, I'll approve Change Order Number 7. It's always nice to get some money back.
That's right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, or, excuse me, any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 6.8, The Superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the Direct Purchase Order Change Orders for the Art Building Renovation Project Multipurpose Athletic Facility. This change order will decrease the project by $4,329.59. This is credit from unused portion of the direct purchase orders. Is there a motion to approve item 6.8?
I'll make a motion we approve item 6.8.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 6.9, KDE Purchase Order Summary Sheet BG 20-166. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the KDE Purchase Order Summary Sheet for the Art Building Renovation Project Multipurpose Athletic Facility. This closes out the direct purchase orders. Is there a motion to approve item 6.9?
I'll make a motion we approve item 6.9, KDE Purchase Order Summary Sheet.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 6.1, Payment to Contractors BG 20-166. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the following payments to contractors for the Art Building Renovation Project Multipurpose Athletic Facility. These payments are listed below. Is there a motion to approve item 6.1?
I'll make a motion we approve item 6.10, Payments to Contractors.
Before the end of my time here, reading this agenda, I will get that straight. I say that every time, so 6.10. There's a motion to approve item 6, and there's a second to approve item 6.10. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 6.11, Payments to Contractors BG 20-167. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the following payments to contractors for the secure vestibule projects. It's $1,494 to JRA Architects for professional services. This is the final invoice for this BG 20-167. Is there a motion to approve item 6.11?
I'll make a motion we approve item 6.11, Payment to Contractors.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Is there a motion to, this actually covers our agenda under our open portion of the meeting tonight. Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel, property, and potential litigation?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion to go into executive session for personnel, property, and potential litigation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And there's a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Anna, are you ready?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, we are back in open session, and... The last item on our agenda is item 9.1, Superintendent Evaluation. It is recommended that the Paducah Board of Education approve the 2021 summative evaluation for Dr. Donald Shively. And I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to go for approval of that summative evaluation.
I assume...
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any comments from the board? So in a summative evaluation under strategic leadership, we have given Dr. Shively exemplary. Under instructional leadership, accomplished. Under cultural leadership, growth required. Under human resources leadership, developing. Under managerial leadership, exemplary. Under collaborative leadership, accomplished. And under influential leadership, developing. We had a thoughtful discussion amongst the board members and with Dr. Shively regarding the evaluation, and look forward to his continued efforts on the evaluation, and continue to work with us to continue to grow and help develop this district for the betterment of the children and for our community. And that's my only comments at this time, unless there's other comments from the board. Okay, is there a motion for adjournment?
Some more.
Is there a second? Oh, excuse me. I need to call the roll to approve the evaluation, so there's been a motion and a second regarding the summative evaluation, as I had written it, or, excuse me, read it. Adam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes.
There is no other questions or comments from the board. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Thank you.